It really ratchets up the fist.
Kevin S. Ferinstall, City Clerk, you're hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 14, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come forth to the City Council.
Mayor Buell.
Here.
Councilmembers Connors.
Here.
Del Toro.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rios.
Here.
City Manager Ben Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Kevin. Want to announce the first item on the agenda?
Our first item is a public hearing on the Southwest Arterial Military Road Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lynch. I move to receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lynch, second by Ms. Connors. Mike, please.
Mr. Mayor, actually, we've got a presentation on Imagine Dubuque tonight, and so that'll be Dave Johnson's going to kick that off.
Well, we have the Southwest Arterial.
Oh.
Road Reconstruction's project.
Well, a little problem, I forgot my computer tonight.
Okay.
So Cindy's going to put that up for me. This is when we need to have the Jeopardy clock going. Thank you. Seal bids received by the Iowa Department of Transportation for the Military Road Reconstruction Project. Assistant City Engineer Bob Schissel recommends award of the construction contract to the low bidder Hoffman Construction Company in amount of $5,236,760.95, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation approval. The Hoffman Construction bid was 26% below the estimate of probable cost. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of plan specifications, estimated costs, and form of contract for the Southwest Arterial Military Road Reconstruction Project with IDOT -- estimated costs, excuse me, and form of contract. Okay, hard time reading this. Southwest Arterial Military Road Construction Project with IDOT concurrence and the city manager recommending approval. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Seeing no one, bring it back to the table for any discussion. Kevin, would you call the roll, please?
Lynch.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Del Toro.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay, next is the work session on Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan Quarterly Update.
Okay, Dave, I believe you're -- we don't need a motion for that, too, because that's -- okay, Dave.
Evening. Let me first say thank you for giving me this opportunity to co-present the update for Imagine Dubuque, the new City Dubuque Comprehensive Plan, as well as City Council's support for this project. This evening, I'd like to begin with a quote. Looking forward 10, 20, 25, or 50 years and contemplating what those years may bring to the community, there's concerns in the minds of many as to how the city will meet the demands that will be made upon it. Solving problems as you go is only part of the job. Isolated solutions are only a hand-to-mouth method. Actions must be taken not only at the right time, but the solutions of problems must meet the whole needs of present day, function jointly, and look to the provision of good conditions for tomorrow. The city plan views the city in this light, never as a passive organism, but one which is constantly changing. This quote is actually from 1936, from the very first comprehensive plan that the City Dubuque did. John Nolan was the author of that plan. He was a famous landscape architect and planner at the time. Eight years later, planning, its purpose, and benefits remain largely the same. City leaders understood then that a unified vision and partnerships were necessary to face community challenges, capitalize on opportunity, as well as create a better community. Leaders understood that change is inevitable. It's how we embrace and capitalize on that change that defines the success of the community. So it's in that same spirit that the City Dubuque is developing the new City Dubuque Comprehensive Plan. Communities develop plans for the same reason. Family might plan a vacation, a home improvement project, or a household budget. It creates orderly, efficient, and informed steps towards achieving and implementing goals. Comprehensive Plan serves as a guide for the community's physical, social, and economic development. It examines past and present conditions and identifies key issues and opportunities, which through the input of residents determines the direction of our community, as well as growth and development. Comprehensive plans help inform the community, as well as policy decisions and community initiatives. The Comprehensive Plan is kind of a roadmap for a community's future, or perhaps a better, more modern analogy would be, a comprehensive plan is the navigation feature on your phone or in your car. Residents are setting the destinations. As mentioned earlier, Dubuque's been making plans for the community since 1931. John Nolan was retained to do the first Comprehensive Plan. 65 years have passed since Dubuque created its next Comprehensive Plan. In between, Dubuque suffered its worst economic downturn, when in the 1980s, the recession and farm crisis had devastating effects on the Midwest and Dubuque. As farm families struggled with the loss of their land and livelihoods, so did businesses with ties to agriculture. Dubuque's economy was strongly influenced by its meatpacking and farm implement industries. And these combined effects of the recession and farm crisis resulted in massive layoffs and economic decline. By January of 1982, and I'm sure councils hear these statistics often, however, you know, they can never be understated, Dubuque's unemployment was highest in the nation at 23%. Between 1980 and 1990, Dubuque lost 7.8% of its population. In 1983, the Chamber of Commerce estimated 10% of housing stock was vacant, and by 1984, the average home value dropped 9%. Dubuque needed to reinvent itself, and Dubuque needed to diversify. Out of this adversity arose the realization that if Dubuque were to succeed, it must return to those fundamental tenets of partnerships and coordination. Residents, businesses, and government must work together to build a stronger, more resilient, and diversified community. The road to new prosperity was outlined in the 1995 City Dubuque Comprehensive Plan, entitled Creating the Future. This document built on grassroots visionary efforts and was the first comprehensive approach to community planning undertaken by Dubuque since 1936. Subsequent to this, the Comprehensive Plan is updated twice, once in 2006 and again in 2012. So much has changed with our community, nation, and even world since 1995, or even 2012 for that matter. It's only fitting that we imagine, reimagine the Comprehensive Plan. How people communicate, how people relate, how people interact, how people do business has changed substantially. For example, in 1995, e-commerce was just starting. Millennials, the second-largest segment of our population, our future workforce, and those perhaps most positioned to reshape our future communities and economies, were children. So hence the importance of developing a new Comprehensive Plan. This is not another update. Community engagement and input is perhaps the single most important aspect of any planning effort. Without it, plans are simply words and images without meaning. A plan must reflect the values of the community, which makes public participation and input essential to the process. It's also essential that the Comprehensive Plan include the input of all residents and is diverse and a comprehensive representation of the Dubuque community. To help us better involve all residents throughout this update process, staff immediately recognized the benefits of developing a plan for public engagement. Engagement planning is as much about learning as it is setting a course for public involvement. Without a complete understanding of past successes and failures, as well as the needs of the community, improved outcomes are unlikely. The engagement plan began by learning from past planning experiences. Team of city staff, we worked with the Human Rights Department, and we identified past goals and reviewed past successes and challenges for public engagement, as well as what we can do better in terms of marketing. The goal was to engage a diverse and comprehensive representation of the entire Dubuque community. How to get there at that time, however, was not. So the first step we took in understanding how to improve the engagement process was to identify community members that have been traditionally underrepresented throughout these processes. This isn't something that's unique to Dubuque. This is a challenge throughout all communities in our country, connecting people to planning efforts such as this. So city staff reached out to many organizations, including cultural groups, socioeconomic groups, faith institutions, youth organizations, as well as the business community, to learn about barriers to involvement, as well as best practices to increase their participation. The experience provided valuable information, but also served to build and strengthen community relationships and partnerships. Residents communicated a clear disconnect with the Comprehensive Plan. Many indicated they didn't understand what a Comprehensive Plan was, or how it affects them in their everyday lives. Therefore, they felt their participation was not important. We also learned residents need to be met where they are, instead of residents coming to us for engagement opportunities. And we need to provide comfortable avenues for engagement, comfortable venues, comfortable opportunities for people to participate. So a one-size-fits-all approach was not going to work. Rather, we needed a diverse, tailored, comprehensive, and meaningful approach towards engagement, education, and marketing, all of which are going to be required in order to meet the needs, meet our expectations of engagement for this project. So this has served as the basis for engagement to date. The campaign for Imagine Dubuque is built around the suggestions of the community and Sustainable Dubuque. Sustainable Dubuque serves as the perfect framework or platform for engagement and the Comprehensive Plan. When we look at cultural and social vibrancy, economic prosperity, environmental integrity, and equity, we quickly realize that these forces touch us in our everyday lives. So this plan represents all people in all facets of our community, and Sustainable Dubuque and Equity have been the framework for our effort to date. So without further delay, if I could introduce a couple people. First off, we have Mike Hoffman. He is the Vice President of TSC Associates, and he's also the project manager, working with me on this project. He's here to present the update and our next steps with this process for council's consideration. And I'm not sure whether they need introduction, but I'd also like to introduce Laura Carstens and Osei Akonloten, who have been instrumental in guiding this process, as well as helping me with this. So without anything further, Mike, if you want to take it away.
Sounds good. Thanks, Dave. Pleasure to be here, Mayor, City Council. Again, it's Mike Hoffman with TSC Associates. I am the lead for this project. We do have a pretty significant team as a part of this process, and I would like to quickly introduce them. I didn't make them come out tonight, I figured I could handle this, but we have, in addition to TSC Associates, who is the lead firm, planners and landscape architects, we have a firm called Business Districts Incorporated. Their focus is on the economic and market piece of the overall Comprehensive Plan. We have a local firm, IIW, that is looking at the infrastructure on the project, as well as providing some great local background and information. We have HDR, which is focused on the transportation component of the Comprehensive Plan. And then we have a team called the Orion Group, which actually has offices across the country. They're another planning firm similar to us, but bring a lot of national perspective, and we thought that was really important, because we do want to make this a new Comprehensive Plan and a large vision for the community, and want to make sure that we're looking not only locally at what's happening in Dubuque or in Iowa, but across the country at best practices and things that we can bring to Dubuque to make sure that your plan is top-notch. As Dave mentioned, we are clearly building on the Sustainable Dubuque model, and my computer is not advancing. Why is that? We actually did rehearse this and practice it a couple minutes ago, and it was working fine then, but it doesn't want to advance. Let me try this. That'll work, okay. We got it, I hit the right button. So again, we are building upon the Sustainable Dubuque model. Clearly, a new Comprehensive Plan, clearly focused on the same principles, though, that are outlined in Sustainable Dubuque. So we want to make sure that this plan is viable, livable, and equitable. And so how that fits into the picture of the Comprehensive Plan, while regarding environmental and ecological integrity, certainly we want to look at the urban design and the fabric and the appearance of the community, their sense of place, the unique areas of the community that are special, and maybe new special areas that we want to create in the future for Dubuque. We want to look at the unique characteristics of the land, so we're going to do a development land analysis, where we look at the physical characteristics of the area. You've got some real significant topography and some significant flood plains, and those issues that need to be thought through and understood, and identify areas that are appropriate for development and areas that are not appropriate for development. That kind of ties into the overall land use picture of the community, and how we would like to see the community broken up into residential, industrial, and commercial areas, and perhaps areas that we want to mix those things, like you've been doing in the Millwork District, which is a wonderful project. Transportation is a key component of this, and we want to make sure that that land use pattern fits well with the transportation system, and they all link and tie well together. Certainly, we need to understand your infrastructure and where it's available, where it's not available, cost to extend utilities and infrastructure, and those elements are rolled into this plan, looking at hazard issues like flooding and major storms and those kind of things. You've already got a very good plan in that regard, so we really just kind of make sure that we're coordinating that and that particular component, and then certainly looking at the environment, making sure we're paying attention to woodlands and wetlands and prairies, and looking at stormwater issues, and all of those components are key elements of the overall environmental and ecological integrity for the Comprehensive Plan. Regarding social and cultural vibrancy, we just want to make sure that we're looking at the health of the community, that we have healthy food sources, that we have good access to healthcare, and those elements tied together in the overall plan. Certainly, housing is a significant component of the Comprehensive Plan, making sure that we have a variety of housing types in the community, that it is affordable, that it is well-located, and that it is working in conjunction with your employment opportunities in the community. Dubuque has got wonderful historical resources. Right now, we want to continue to preserve those and make sure that they work into the future and reuse buildings, and make sure that that historical component maintains its unique identity for Dubuque. You've got great cultural resources in this community right now, very impressive, I think. I've been very inspired by what you have available in town culturally right now. We want to make sure that that fits into the picture of the community that we're painting in this Comprehensive Planning effort. Educational systems certainly are important. Certainly, public safety is a key element, and parks and recreation. A lot of the people that we've talked to on the street and events so far have talked about parks and recreational elements as some things that we want to maybe focus on in the future. So that's a key part of the plan. And then we want to certainly make sure that regarding economic prosperity, we build on some of the great work that Greater Dubuque Development Corporation has been doing. We want to look at local, regional, and national trends. We want to make sure that we are competitive with the communities that are out there across the country, that we may be competing for, for talent. And we want to make sure that we're looking at some of the key opportunity sites for both development and redevelopment, so that we understand what uses are appropriate in those locations, what incentives might be needed, and how the mix of uses should work on some of these key sites, and where the best opportunities for development are in the community. All wrapped around the picture of looking at the equity elements that Dave was talking about earlier, and making sure that this plan does, in fact, work for all of the residents of Dubuque. We have established a timeline. We began late summer, I guess, if you will, really focused on getting up to speed, looking at your past plans, setting up the communication plan that we've developed, outlining the process, and all the groups we're going to be talking to. We've done some good things already, and I'll highlight some of those for you in a minute. One of our major workshops initially was the Economic Prosperity Workshop that we held last month. Unfortunately, we were competing against the Cubs World Series game that night, so it probably didn't help our turnout too much, but we still had a great input and a great discussion for the people that did come out, and I'll highlight that for you in a minute. Later this month, we're going to be meeting with Inclusive Dubuque, or actually, next month, meeting with Inclusive Dubuque, and beginning that process of talking about some of the equity issues that we wanted to deal with. And we've been working very closely with your Long Range Planning Advisory Commission, too. They've been great in terms of providing input and thoughts into this process. As we move into next year, we've got a couple of major workshops early in the year. We've got workshops essentially February, and then every couple months after that. The first one in February will be on environmental integrity and focusing on those issues. Then we're going to have another workshop in April, talking about social and cultural vibrancy, and then we've got another one in June focused on equity issues exclusively. We're trying to partner with some of the organizations in town, so for example, with the Equity Workshop, we've got the Circles Group that's going to help partner with us on that, to make sure that we're reaching out to all sectors of the community, and so we're excited about those opportunities. And then our game plan is to have a draft plan done by August, so that we can begin to move into public hearing stages. We'll have some open houses for the community to reveal the plan, and have that available in time for you guys to roll that into your budgeting process for the following years, so.
I would just add that in June, we also have a special community workshop scheduled that'll be focused on equity. And I would also like to add that throughout this process, we are constantly feeding this system with more information and keeping people engaged, whether it be through our online opportunities, or whether city staff is going to a group or an organization to talk to them. So we're really working on continuing momentum with this project and keeping people plugged into it. And some of these avenues, we're going to be talking about here in a little bit. And again, keep in mind, we're looking at this as a diverse and tailored approach towards engagement, understanding that social media alone cannot accomplish this, nor can traditional meetings alone accomplish this, so.
Great segue into my next slide. One of the first things we did was we actually went to folks that were enjoying the Dubuque and All That a Jazz event. We went to meet with folks that were doing the farmer's market, and that was wonderful. Chance to meet one-on-one with some of your residents in the community, hear some of their ideas. You can see a young gentleman here suggesting bigger playparks and ADA access. We had a wide range of topics and ideas at the meeting, at those sessions, but it was wonderful to be out there and on the street. And that's, you know, what Dave talked about earlier, about going to the community. We traditionally have always done public meetings and public workshops and asked the community to come to us. We found that if we really want to reach out to all segments of the community, we need to go to them. And so events like the farmer's market were wonderful ways to reach out to the community and talk to people one-on-one about what their key concerns were for the community and its future. Our main goal here is really to be a plan that is built by the community. My role as a consultant is to kind of take all these ideas, harness them, focus them, maybe ferret out some strengths and challenges with those different things, but we really want the ideas to be driven by the community, and so we're really focusing on that. We're doing that by diversity of outreach techniques. We've done a lot of interviews in the community. We have done a number of focus groups already and plan to do more in the planning process. We've established working groups, so for each of the key areas like economic prosperity and like environmental integrity and like social-cultural vibrancy and like equity, we have separate working groups that we're going to be talking to people in the community and making sure that the plan is on track and meeting the needs of Dubuque going forward. Again, we've gone out to a couple of community events already. We're open to go out to some more, if we have some other activities that we think would be good to be at, but reaching out to the community at events is a wonderful way to do planning. Workshops, we talked earlier about the workshops we're having on the four key areas, so I think that's already been covered. The website, the app, those are really engaging tools, and quick polls, all are great ways to engage the community. We've developed a number of marketing pieces already, so there's cards that you might have seen around town that talk about Imagine Dubuque and highlight ways that the community can be involved by going to the website and the app, and just kind of planting the seed, if you will, of this planning process that's going to be going on for the next year. We've developed some fun posters to publish around the community. There were posters that were put on all the jewel buses in town to let people know that this was going on, and really just trying to reach out to the community and let them know that the community is thinking forward and planning for the future and developing a future vision, and we want them to be a part of that vision. One of the fun things we like to do early on in the planning process is develop kind of a promotional video, just a quick, couple-minute way to let people know that this is happening and going on. The mayor was kind enough to do an introduction for us, and this is the premiere, so you guys get to be at a premiere of a movie presentation. So if you want to go ahead and play the video, we'll let that go. The purpose of Imagine Dubuque is to build on our historic past, pave the way for a vibrant future, and work to identify ways to make our city a more viable, livable, and equitable community. It's time to come together, to plan together, to dream together. It's time to Imagine Dubuque.
Dubuque residents, business owners, and stakeholders, you are the stewards of this plan. This is a call to action. Share your vision and ideas on the future of Dubuque. What do you love most about Dubuque? What could be improved? How do you imagine Dubuque in 20 years? Visit the website, imaginebuke.com, and download the project app to share ideas and view those submitted to date. Let us notify you of opportunities and upcoming events. Enter your email via the follow button in the website's footer to receive plan updates straight to your inbox, or allow push notifications when you download the app. It is our mission to ensure Imagine Dubuque reflects and celebrates the collective voice of our community. Help us address opportunities and challenges to make our city more viable, livable, and equitable. It's time to come together, to plan together, to dream together. It's time to Imagine Dubuque.
So we've just loaded that up to the website. People will be getting notices via email, by push notifications. It's going to be on your cable TV channel soon. We really kind of just, again, a quick way to get people excited about the planning process. And so thank you, Mayor, for giving us the introduction on that, and we're hopeful that we'll get people excited about this planning process. Other things that we were doing to engage the community. We created these idea boards. There are actually two of them. One is located over at the library, where people can provide an idea, they fill in the blank essentially, "My idea to make Dubuque a more viable, livable, and equitable community is..." And you write a little note on one of those post-its and put it on the board there, and you can see what other people have done, and that's going well, and there's been a lot of ideas generated from that already. We also have an additional board that can be taken to events in the community. So anyone out there that has got an event going on, that you'd like one of these boards taken out to, see Dave, and he will make sure that that happens. But we found that's kind of a fun way to get people excited about a project, and so we're looking forward to the ideas that come off of that board. Project postcards. Not everybody is into the high-tech tools, so we thought we'd go old-school, and old-school cool, and have some postcards about Imagine Dubuque, where people can just write in some comments and send the postcard in to Dave and get the feedback that way. We've used it already a couple times. I met with a group of seniors, and it was interesting meeting with the seniors. We had different tables doing different activities, right? And one of the tables was sitting there doing some knitting, and they're used to sitting there knitting and talking at the same time, and they were wonderful. I'll show you a picture of them in a minute. Gave us some great ideas. Some of the other tables were really in the middle of some intense dominoes and cards games, and they didn't really want to listen to me for very long, but they filled out cards and sent them in. So that worked out well, too. So having multiple avenues of getting input really is exciting, and it is working well so far. The Circles Initiative. Actually, the same night we had our Economic Prosperity Workshop, they had and put on what they called the Big View Night Workshop, where they talked about the issues, the same issues that were working into the Comprehensive Plan, and heard from a different audience about what some of their concerns and interests were, and they provided a lot of good comments and feedback from that session, and we're excited to work with them moving forward on some of our equity workshops as well. The project website, if you haven't taken a look at it, please do. There's been 1,200 unique visitors already to the website, so we're excited about that. We hope to double or triple those numbers as we go through the process, but it's a great start. You can go on the website and learn about a lot of the things that we've talked about tonight. So it tells you a little bit about what a Comprehensive Plan is, and there's an educational component to it, but there's also a component to provide direct feedback and input. You can provide comments on there, you can attach pictures to comments if you want to. We give people a choice. They can send the comments directly to us as the planning team, or they can make them public if they want to. So really, either way, we'll take input from them. We also have the ability to post documentation of past planning efforts, so there's a summary of our workshops that have occurred already on there, and we're also promoting future events going forward. Really encourage people to be an email follower there, so you can stay engaged to the process. And we've had 71 people do that already, and that's as of last week. There's probably a few more than that right now, but it's gone well so far, and we're looking forward to getting more people engaged in that. One of the things we do with that website and with the app that we created was a series of quick polls. Traditionally, in community planning, we always started a Comprehensive Plan with a survey. You want to hear from the residents, you want to get that input, and it is very valuable. The problem was, when we did Comprehensive Planning surveys, because it's comprehensive and it covers so many different topics, you'd have surveys that were long, that took 15 minutes, 30 minutes to do, and people stopped doing them, honestly. Nobody had time to do that anymore. So what we do now is we create these quick polls, where we break things up into different topics. So for example, our first quick poll was just asking a simple question, "What word would you use to describe Dubuque?" Top answer we heard was "historical," which is absolutely true and wonderful. So that was, and we had 186 responses on that before we really began a lot of the media and advertising on this project, so it was a great start to these quick polls. Our game plan is to kind of have one about every month or so, just a couple, four or five short questions. We are tracking demographics to make sure we're getting a good mix of folks responding to these things, but it's a nice way to do it. When you fill out the response, you can see what other people have said, not until after you've put in your response, but it is a great way to kind of give some quick input in a variety of topics. And so is it scientifically accurate? No. But does it give us some good feedback and some good reaction for quick questions? Absolutely. And I guess I would say to the council, if you guys have some questions that you want to ask and would like to hear from the community, we can plug that in, too, so again, touch with Dave, and we can roll those in. But we'll have them on different topics. So the first, we're just doing one now on economic prosperity. We're going to follow that up with different surveys on environmental issues, on equity issues, on social and cultural vibrancy issues, and kind of follow the same format that we've talked about for the polling questions. We created a project app for this, another fun way to do engagement. Most people these days have one of these in their pockets or in their purse or somewhere around, and it is a fun way to keep in touch with people. We can do kind of push notifications to remind them, hey, there's a meeting or a workshop on the Imagine Dubuque process in a couple of hours, or we just posted a video to the project website to check it out. But one of the things I really like about the app is that it is, since you have your phone with you, when you're driving around town and you see something of interest, stop and type in a quick note to us right on your smartphone. Or if you see a picture or you see something in the community that is exciting, this is a wonderful example of future development in Dubuque. Or honestly, if you're in some other town and you see something that would work in Dubuque, take a picture of it, send it to us via that app, and we'll have a good record of it and have it documented. Comments as well, really easy to do on a smartphone with this app, and so we would encourage people to download that and take a look at it. It is available both in the Apple Store, the iTunes Store, and the Google Play Store, so Android or Apple, either one works well, and just kind of another fun way to be engaged in the planning process. We've been working closely with the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission. They have been fun to work with. We've given them homework assignments, they didn't get mad at me, so that was fun. We asked them some simple questions. One of the first exercises we did with them was just say, think 10 years out into the future, what would you like to see in the paper or in whatever media that is current that day about Dubuque? And you can see some of the terms that they came up with here and the suggestions they came up with here. A lot of it built upon the sustainability principles of what we've been talking about, reusing historic buildings like the great work you've been doing in the Millwork District or looking at greenhouse gases and those kind of components. So those are a few of the ideas that were tossed out, but we're going to be working with them roughly every couple of months. We go back for them and kind of talk about where we're at in the process, give them updates on elements of the plan, and get their input. They've been great to work with so far, and we're looking forward to doing that on a regular basis. Our next session, I think, is just next month, right?
Correct.
To the Long Range Committee, so. That is going well. We're also working closely with your city leadership team. We had a session with them in September where we introduced them to the planning process and then engaged them in some discussion, too. We did a similar headline exercise with them, and you can see some of the headlines that they came up with here. Dubuque is the safest city in the country, lowest unemployment rate. Quite interesting, given your earlier statistics about where it was at one point in time, and to think that, and honestly, it's pretty low in Dubuque right now, so you're moving in that direction. So you can see some of those example headlines that came out of working with that group. But we'll be working with them, and again, we're going to meet with them next month. We'll have different exercises and activities as we go through the process and really try to take advantage of that wonderful resource you have in your staff here in Dubuque. Regarding interviews, we've done probably more in this comprehensive plan than I have in any in my life, and it's been wonderful. It's really a fun way to engage the community and to hear directly from them what their interests and concerns are for the community. We specifically exclude staff from that. We want people to be comfortable of saying whatever they want to say. Everyone almost has said, oh, we don't care if staff was here or not, but nonetheless, we want to make sure that they're anonymous comments, and so we have talked to a lot of staff folks. We've talked to a lot of people in the business community. We have talked to a lot of the different groups that you have in the community. You can see on the list beyond my right, anyway, the League of United Latin American Citizens, the Muslim community, the Black Men Coalition, NAACP. The Lantern Center was a great group of folks to talk to, and just a wide variety of different folks in the community that we want to make sure we're reaching out to, that they feel involved and that they feel that their voice is heard in this planning process, and we hear specifically what their concerns are. And they have been very open and honest in sharing those concerns, and the great things that they find about Dubuque as well. So that's been a lot of fun.
And I think this really speaks to our tailored approach towards engagement. A lot of the communities on this list are people that we, through our learning process, we learned we would never get to a group workshop. So again, we're creating comfortable opportunities for people to engage and share their values and their vision and their ideas, and these interview groups, these small meeting groups provided that venue.
Another, in addition to the really small groups, we've met with some a little bit larger groups. So we put on a couple of sessions over at one of the high schools in town. We talked to students. They're really fun to talk to. They're not as filtered as some adults maybe are, so we heard a lot of good comments. But no, they're the future of the community, right? We want to make sure that they stay in Dubuque or come back to Dubuque if they go away to college. And so what are they, what do they find great about Dubuque? What are some of their concerns? Those were great conversations, and we really, really enjoyed engaging with them in that effort, and we're open to doing more of that. We've met with some neighborhood groups and had some good discussions with some of the concerns in some of your neighborhoods in town, and those were really very open, and it was interesting to hear people's conversations about how some of the neighborhoods have changed and some of the really positive things that people were saying about the efforts that you guys have had with the Bee Branch efforts and some of the things that you've done in the Washington Park, the Washington neighborhood. So really, some positive comments and some challenges and concerns we want to make sure we address in the plan as well. You can see some of the pictures of the knitting group that we met with over at the Hills and Dales Community Center. They were great folks to talk with, people that have lived in town most of their life and had some great things to say about the community and some good ideas, too, for the plan. We've got a couple of things coming up that are scheduled. We're going to meet with Green Drinks Dubuque in early January. We're meeting with Inclusive Dubuque next month and have a workshop with them. We're meeting with Leadership Dubuque in January. We want to reach out to them. We want to reach out to the Young Professionals Group, and they're still trying to schedule that one. There's another Millennials Group in town that we want to meet with. And honestly, if there's others that you guys think we ought to engage with, again, chat with Dave, and we'll see what we can do to work that into the process.
We're actually, we're making headway into working with our local area colleges as well as our public high schools.
As I mentioned, we did have an Economic Prosperity Workshop on October 25th. We did have some great table discussions. We tried to keep, focus on some of the key pillars of economic prosperity. So the obvious one is the regional economy and what we can do to enhance that. We had a brief presentation by Bridget Lane, our kind of market expert, that talked about what is happening nationally and what some of the trends out there might be. We then also talked about elements like community design, which is also part of economic prosperity. We talked about smart energy use. We talked about resource management and had some great ideas and conversation come out of those table discussions that was really a lot of fun and a really great chance to give people an opportunity to provide some input. What we did was we had a range of different trends and topics and essentially let them vote and pick the top five or six they wanted to spend time talking about, and then broke up into these groups to talk about those individual topics. And then, and it was a really enjoyable conversation and heard some really great ideas about ways to think about Dubuque going forward and ways to enhance and engage the community. So that was a lot of fun. Just real quickly, things that are coming up, again, Inclusive Dubuque Focus Group next month, Leadership Team, and Long Range Planning Advisory Commission next month, Green Drinks Dubuque, and Leadership Dubuque in January, and then in February, we will have our Environmental and Ecological Community Workshop on February 21st. So that's a little bit about where we've gone so far and where we're headed in the next couple of months. With that, I will turn it back to the mayor and be happy to answer any questions you guys have. Questions? Comments? Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate your enthusiastic response, and it's quite a job you have. We have, just last Tuesday, there were million-dollar organizations trying to figure out what people want and what they want to do, and it's difficult to see what people want and how they're going one way or the other. They would choose this or that, and so it's difficult. So I lived in the community over 30 years, and to me, I can tell you what I think people want here in Dubuque. It's pretty simple, and I know that you're expanding this list, but I think they want a friendly neighborhood. They want a safe community. You've talked about that. They want satisfying employment. We're always working on that. They want more time to spend with their family, and they want respect. And so I appreciate your comment when you're talking about all these different communities, to let them know their voice is heard. And so I appreciate this outreach. I don't, I think what I just mentioned are the main things we'd like to address, but the citizens maybe have some good ideas on how to address those things. Have you come across some particular ones that you could talk about now that kind of surprised you, that was a, what a neat idea?
It's interesting, when you go around and talk to the groups, and some groups you think would have different ideas actually have the same idea. So even talking to the high school kids and the seniors, a lot of the same concepts came across a lot and clear from those, and so that was great. We really have not focused on, too much on specific solutions yet. We're really just kind of trying to identify their concerns and their issues and things that want to carry forward. I can tell you and repeat that I heard frequently the idea and desire for even more family-oriented activities and events in the community, things that maybe didn't involve beer, like the teenagers were saying that, you know, there's a lot of good music scene in Dubuque, but unfortunately, a lot of it happens in bars and we can't go. So venues like that were some things that were brought out in early discussions, but really been just more focused on identifying the issues at this point and not so much the solutions.
Thank you.
Mr. Del Toro?
And to echo David's, or Mr. Resnick's comments, you know, I commend you for your outreach. And as you mentioned during the presentation that you welcomed ideas, one of the ideas that I have, just off the top of my head, to try to expand your outreach, I know with the idea boards, they seem pretty easy to set up and just kind of have at a set location for a bit. Has there been any thought to maybe utilizing our places of employment here throughout Dubuque, some of maybe our larger employers, and having that in a common area? Maybe the Rochefort Building, maybe other areas where there might be some traffic to allow them the opportunity to share some more input with it?
Absolutely. Yeah, I had lunch the other day, and the Rochefort Building was thinking that very thing, that'd be a perfect spot to have that sitting out, and I'm sure there's lots of others in town.
The Rochefort Building was one of the buildings that we have been thinking about, having the traveling idea board having a presence. We were also looking to, working with the mall manager on having this located out at the mall for a period of time, so I think those are both great options.
Sure. Wonderful, because I think, you know, always, you know, going to these different groups that you have been going to now, you can definitely get a good segment of the population or the city, but I think when you also go right to where they're at, you know, you're definitely going to get them to spend, you know, five, 10 minutes of their time to share some input, so great to hear. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Connors?
Another spot that comes to mind for me is the Y. You know, as you walk in there, they have a space, and so it's a convenient space. People would go past the coming and going, and they have a wide range of ages of people who come and go out of there.
Yeah. And it's fun, it gets people thinking, too. Like, when we did the farmer's market, we had a similar idea board just on a white piece of paper, and people filled in little spot bubbles of what they were thinking. And it was fun to watch the people come in and just kind of read everybody else's comment, and then add their own, but they enjoyed reading others as much as they do coming up with their own sometimes, I think.
Yeah, the idea board, it's so simple in concept, and yet it's so effective. I'm amazed at how many people to date have been writing comments on the one that's permanently in the library. It's a lot of great ideas, and a lot of people are using it.
And it is good to move it around to different places, too, because there was multiple comments about expanding the Childers Library, which is actually where the board was, so we want to move it around a little bit. Right. Okay. Anyone else?
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for that presentation. Certainly, you know, we're going to come up with some great ideas, and, you know, I just want people to know that there is no idea that's a bad idea and that the secret to our success has been taking good ideas and turning them into reality, not really caring whose ideas they are. And Rusty Knight actually said that at a All-America City presentation that he was a part of. So I would encourage everyone, you know, to be, become a part of this. It's as simple as, you know, no one's going to know who wrote what down on any of those